Twenty twenty. Ordinance with the. H for the period of us go to one, one twenty one to September thirty of the twenty two. But having comments with respect to. Maxims that would be in place. Read and adopt the. Says the. I'll close the hearing. To approval of the agenda and this is add.
Yeah, I'd like to add just a quick, I don't have all the notes, but RSU twenty one last meeting is an update on that.
I'd like to also add a, I have a recycling renewal permit for AIM. That I'd like to discuss on the business.
For who AIM?
AIM, yes, on Route one.
Move to approve as a minute.
Second.
All in favor then? In this public forum, anybody want to bring up to our attention if the matter is not already slated to be discussed this evening? Yes.
It's more of a question that the board related to the policy of all of the various boards being face to face. There was some discussion going around related to the possibility of having mixed. Attendance, some on Zoom, some here in, in the building. I thought I'd come and ask, see if that would be something that, that the board would be amenable to because we have, we have some planning board members there. They don't want to be here. We have other applicants whose agents have to travel quite a distance to get them. And they were wondering if it would be possible to do Zoom. I told them I'd bring it up and ask you this.
Well, we adopted a policy, I believe, with respect to, to be not.
Yeah.
Yes, we did. Mr. Chairman.
And that, that policy was based on. Slow down from the state, right?
That is correct.
And that policy basically says that most meetings or attendance has to be in person unless somebody is ill or those types of things. And in fact, the chairman, in your case, the planning board, I think you can make a decision if somebody is, the distance is. Untoward, if somebody has to come from a long distance and they ask you, then you, you can make a decision to allow them to appear remotely. But, but I mean, we can get you a copy of the policy, Rich.
Like I said, well, no, I've seen the policy.
Oh, okay.
If the issue came up because there's a number of other towns in the area that are not meeting. Some of them are meeting completely remotely, others have a mixed method and they thought, find out who mixed. So I thought I'd come down and ask.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to add with that, I just, you know, I'd like some clarification because to Rich's point. You know, there are towns that are doing, you know, municipal meetings and they are still on Zoom. So, I mean, are they still on Zoom? They're just doing it because they're doing it or they on Zoom because they really have somebody that can't attend the meeting?
Well, I, I can't answer that, but if they're doing it just because they want to do it, I think they're violating the, the law. And, you know, probably nothing's going to happen to them unless they're challenged. So they're probably just moving along as best they can at this point and, and. That's it.
Some comments after it is, they don't care. I mean, with the, you know, they're, they're going to proceed as they want until somebody says they can't.
That's correct.
So.
The long travel, I don't think is a good reason. Because until the pandemic came along, everybody traveled to the meeting, no matter where they were from. So I don't think the pandemic is an excuse to not want to travel.
That answers my question.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay, anything else for public forum? I'm going to move on to approval of the minutes for August twenty third, September thirteenth.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of August twenty third and September thirteenth as submitted.
Questions for the discussion? Not all the table. Any board reports that we dated RSU?
Yeah, just the, the last meeting that they had, basically it was, there were a few agenda items that. They talked about, there was one higher, I don't remember who it is, I'll report on that at, at the next meeting. But, you know, really just a listening session, folks just asking questions about, you know, COVID. And, and all the stuff that's going on with that. The chair definitely, you know, took a whole lot of notes. And every time a question was asked, you know, he made sure that he fully understood the question, repeated it. And, you know, and told everybody that, you know, he'll get back and try to answer those questions. The other thing of issue was, it was a discussion by Dr. Burgess about. The. The homecoming dance that was put on, apparently the, the RSU decided not to do a homecoming dance. And there were some parents that said, well, you know what, we're going to have one anyways. And, you know, he kind of made a statement about that. But that was pretty much, that was it.
We've done that as a manager's report.
Yes, in your, in your packet, you'll have a memo that. Was provided to me by Chief Bollier, chief is here tonight to talk a little bit more about. The situation that, that he's experiencing relative to. Staffing issues with some of the paramedics, he's come up with a, a plan. As well as also requesting some additional compensation for those paramedics as such. So he's here, he can maybe embellish a little bit more on the, the memo and then carry on discussion with you folks.
Good guess, I'd all had a chance to read the memo.
I.
So we're looking back three to five years ago. Yeah, so looking back three to five years ago, we had about twenty paramedics. Nine were basic EMTs and we had. Eight advanced EMTs and then the rest of the personnel was either firefighters or people we keep on, you know, we have some people who are. Seniors in the community that we keep on as support because everyone has a job, assignment to. But lately, the past year and a half, since COVID started, we've lost a lot of medics, a lot of paramedics. So I'm down to about ten paramedics right now and that's including myself, my deputy chief. And I have. Two now, as of today, I have three that are inactive. So it's, it's dwindling down a lot. So these guys, I, I'm trying to retain these people. But there's offers elsewhere. So what's keeping them here? I don't know. My first thought was to create a templated shift for these guys. So right now they're picking per diem shifts, so it's just a random shift here and there. So I want to give them the option to choose based on their schedule because most of them work career jobs elsewhere. Make them, give them the ability to choose a day that they would. Commit. So that'd be a templated shift, that day would be the same, they would, based on their schedule. So if they look at their calendar, like a diagonal or whatever, and they'd be working that templated shift. So that way it would be kind of a. Well, one, it would be a lot easier for scheduling because we'd know that that day was covered. And then it would also be. Easier for them because they know they would be working that day, that day is given to them. Now, they would still have the option to choose to add more shifts, but that's just one shift. So they could add more shifts to the, to the, to the per diem side if they want to. Because I know everyone has busy lives and stuff's going on, so including with COVID, which has been terrible. And with that, I was hoping to add some. Monetary funds towards their wages. Because of the local area, surrounding area towards us is, is. Definitely has a higher pay rate than we use. So. Majority of the departments that have paramedics, the average rate is around twenty four dollars an hour, some of them are paying twenty six to twenty eight dollars an hour. I know we can't go there, but I think twenty four dollars an hour would. Put us in the ballpark with the surrounding communities and just so I can retain the paramedics that I have, so they don't go elsewhere. Because if I lose what I have. The station's going to be empty. And the paramedics are, are. Vital part for the, for the ambulance that we have. We have the advanced guys, the advanced guys can provide ALS, but they can't provide certain, they can't, you know, administer certain medications that paramedics can't. They can't do procedures that the paramedics can't. So it's vital for us to have these guys around. That's it, any questions?
Can we do that and save with the budget? Because we, we budgeted at what, twenty?
Right, twenty one ninety seven. We're probably anticipating that. An increase in compensation for those will have a, have an ad, have an adverse impact on the budget. We don't know exactly how many we're going to have this to the, that will accept this type of system. So I can't give you a definitive answer. We're thinking maybe fifteen thousand, fifteen to twenty thousand, but we're not sure yet.
The call force budget as well, we increased that line last year.
Right.
And I have five people on the call force now, which is a huge reduction in response on that stuff. So. You know, if that, those funds at the end of the year are left over, we can carry that over to that line so that, to help out on those wages.
Right, we had, he did a good job this year of having a balance left, so he's been good at managing his. His money. So i- if you, if you agree to it, I think that we can make it work within the budget confines that we have, specifically what he's talking about with the call force. We have funds in there, so we may, I think we're going to be able to make it work, but we'll keep you in the loop. We'll report to you if we find that we're having an adverse impact on it.
And just to give you a, a quick number, last year, our call volume, we were at number four sixty seven. Today, last year. Today, we're at five thirty three. About a fifteen percent increase this year.
Because of this?
Because, yeah, because of everything. So.
So I, I think for me, as far as a, you know, an increase, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we try to do what we can to work within the current budget. Obviously, if you got some extra money, that's great. If you don't have extra money, it's got to come from somewheres and. Rather not go down that road, but if we can try to figure it out, if, you know, if you want extra money, I would ask that, you know, look at your budget, try to come up with a plan. You know, and figure it out out of your budget. Any increase, I'm sure we'll probably have to at some point in time, but.
Well, the, the estimates are on twenty thousand, but that's with a paramedic on duty twenty four seven for the remainder of the year. Now, I don't have a paramedic to put on duty twenty four seven, seven days a week, I just don't have it. So that, it would, so that number would be significantly less. But that number was put on there, that would be the worst scenario.
On, on a templated shift that you talked about, isn't it, is there a concern on that you won't be able to fill certain shifts, certain days?
Well, that's.
Like a Friday or?
Yeah, so right now, the guys, like, it's a difficult thing to manage because. The guys, like, let's say the guys who work in Bitterford career, they work one day on, three days off, one day on, three days off. So they always have three days off. The guys at Salk will work one day on, two days off, one day on, four days off. So they got to manage their schedules based on, you know, their lives and everything. So if that person on that four days off wants their second day off or the third day off to work in a run though, we can template that in. But I got to coordinate with the guys who work in Bitterford, the guys who work in Westbrook, the guys who work in Kennebunk and make sure that everything lines up for everything. Now, that could be significantly help us because I'd have guys, I know that there's days where those guys would be here. But, and then that's when we do the per diem schedule on the side, beyond that, and to fill in those spots. Right now, we have a lot of slots. I figure, we, we figure a twelve hour shift. A twelve hours one shift. And there's, there's months on the schedule that had twenty, eighteen, twenty, twenty five open shifts.
We don't have enough folks there, what do you do, move away at that point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to fill in the slots. And right now people are going elsewhere.
Well, I, I mean, I think, you know, when you, people are going elsewhere because you're saying money, but, you know, I think. That's just going to become a rabbit hole, right? You're going to chase that rabbit hole because you're going to, if we increase a little bit, I think the surrounding towns are in a better position to increase, so they're going to increase.
The surrounding towns are going to increase either way.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just a rabbit hole that we're going to chase forever here, you know?
It doesn't matter what we do, the surrounding towns are going to increase, they're already increased, they're already at twenty six and twenty eight dollars an hour. But Kennebunk board pays thirty two, I can't compete with that.
Now, why just the increase on the paramedics?
Because the paramedics is where we're hurting. I've lost twelve paramedics in the past year.
But the, the, the paramedics don't exist, I mean, they're, most of the paramedics we have were Bitterford and they're forced to Bitterford. You're not going to get them back.
I can, I can, I know that. I know that, but I need to retain the ones that I have.
I just, I mean, from a fair standpoint, it seems unfair to increase just the paramedics and not the advanced and the basics. You know, so now the, now the paramedics are going to make. Over seven dollars more an hour than the next level down.
Yeah, but I need to start somewhere, that's where we're hurting.
I don't think you can increase one without the other. Because if you increase one group, the next group is going to walk away until.
Yeah.
Something happens for them. I think if you, if you do it, I think we need to do pretty much across the board. To keep everybody happy and content.
Yeah.
You know, if I get a, if I get a two or three or more dollar raise. And Jason doesn't get it, but he's doing almost the same thing I am. He's like, we'll go down the street.
Well, I'm in favor of that, I know that, but I know the money is not there.
Well, yeah. It's all about money for us, but it's about money for them folks too.
Absolutely.
It sounds as though you have, since you're missing quite a few people and it was budgeted for, it sounds as though you do have extra funds in the budget that you can move around to use for this.
Well, like I said, the call force budget, we've lost a lot on call force as well. Some people, because of, because of COVID, some people said, I'm stepping out and they never came back.
Yeah, but I still agree with, with, with what Phil said and what they said about if you're going to. Bring the paramedics up, work with Keith to see what you can do to bring everybody up. Because I definitely think we, we, yes, we need the paramedics, I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing that, but I, I can't see giving the paramedics. That if you're not giving everybody else something.
It was, it was considered as a start to just. Give us a boost for the paramedics, to get those guys and maybe. Be an incentive to bring some back.
Well, ju- just for reference, la- last year he was able to save twenty one thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars, they had spent in the budget. So when we're talking twenty, I think there may be some, some room there to do some of these adjustments. I'm not opposed to. I think we're in some really unique times. And generally, I wouldn't be, you know, looking at. At making some, some substantial increases in, in rates in the middle of a budget, simply because. We don't have staffing. What we're having now is not only staffing, but a lack thereof of it. There isn't just, there isn't enough people going around. I, I was always hopeful that the, the, at least the Southern Maine chiefs would get together and maybe try to do some sort of. Consolidated ambulance service that would, that would utilize the existing paramedics that we have in the area. Maybe just staff two or three ambulances with these folks and then have them go anywhere they needed to go in order to provide that service. But that just hasn't been a reality yet. Whether it hasn't got hard enough yet, that they haven't thought about that. I'm not sure, but this is what we're up against and I'd like to be able to, to keep folks. If it's the consensus of the board to, to look at our other. Rates as well and make adjustments accordingly, then obviously we can, we can do that and come back with a, and him, and then the chief and I can really look at in earnest. At what the overall cost may be based on his projections out for staffing for the rest of the year and then. Come up with a number that we can work with.
Go along with that.
Do you want to postpone that doing, taking any action?
Well, it, it depends on really what you want to do, I mean, if, if you're, if you're in earnest with it, I would like to have you take some action with the paramedics. And then obviously, I think the direction I'm seeing tonight is that you also want us to do something with the advanced and the basics, and so we'll do that. We'll come back with another proposal to make those adjustments and those salaries as well, those hourly rates. We'll look at, we'll analyze other communities and what they're paying and make adjustments accordingly and then we'll report to you as to what impact that will have on the overall budget.
What are the paramedics getting now?
Twenty one ninety seven?
It is twenty one fifty seven.
Twenty one fifty seven.
Okay.
There'll be a couple dollars more. Per hour if we go at twenty four for paramedics.
All right, so you have discussed this and, and looked over the budget for this. If that's the case, I will make a motion that we increase wages for the paramedics to twenty four dollars an hour. And once that is done, that we then get together and consider the others.
So I would rather wait because if you go to twenty four dollars an hour tonight and then there's no leftover funds for any of the other positions, then.
Then we'll have to find it because it's, it's not, it won't be fair because what will happen, he might have enough paramedics to fill a shift, but he won't have anybody else to go with the paramedic. And that won't do any good because you'll only have one person on shift, the other person, the other people will go somewhere else. So we've got to look at the, at the whole picture. All right, now this is where the hole is.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the twenty four dollar increase to twenty four.
Yeah, we have a motion with no second.
No second at this point. With the proviso that we could also look forward and examine what would be done to increase the wages for the advanced and basics folks.
Apologize, could I hear the motion again, please?
I just made a motion that we increase paramedic salary, uh, pay to twenty four dollars an hour. With the proviso that we are going to sit down and look at increasing the others also to bring everybody into the loop.
We look at the others.
By the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll have a proposal in front of you next, at your next meeting.
So if the paramedic increase fully expands the leftover. Funds, where is the additional funds going to come from?
He's got six hundred and sixty five thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars in his budget, his total budget, including. Fire department, call company and fire EMT per diem, so. We'll just have to, there may be sacrifices that we make elsewhere in order to make sure that the staffing. Is, is adequate and that we have the staffing we need, so. That will be something that we'll have to look at, maybe we delay some expenses and then evaluate that as we get to the end of the fiscal year. To ensure that we have the money necessary to pay those funds.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to go to the town to have an.
No, it wasn't, it's not, it's not us to go to the town.
So let's, you know, let's, let's work it within the budget that he has now, let's see what he can come up with, within his budget. You know, give us some information on that and then we can go from there.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to going back to the town.
I am, but.
You know, I mean, we've got a service here, I think people want it. And if people are dropping out, we can't pay people, and we're not going to have it, but I don't think the, Elizabeth Valley is going to like that much.
No, but you know what, I, I think you need to look at his budget, take a good idea on what's his budget.
Everybody's hiring out there, right? I mean, it's a bidding war out here, get competent people to do anything. It's, it's amazing.
I think it's just that the face of reality, that's, that's the way it is right now.
And if everyone else knows that we're coming back, we're coming back in two weeks with a proposal for them, then. It's not as though we're cutting them out completely.
I'll second Donald's motion.
Any further discussion, folks? And then I'll put a civil vote, all in favor of Donald's motion?
Thanks, guys. Yeah, she's, she's here to, to, to be involved in our discussion on COVID nineteen.
Okay.
Is he in the, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. The other thing I had on there is vacation maxims. If you recall at our, our last business meeting, we, we made some adjustments relative to our two public works employees who haven't been able to. Take their vacations and provided some compensation to them for a, a week or so of, of their earned time. The issue then came up at the end of, after the meeting was over. Chairman Danilic and I just had a quick conversation as to whether or not these funds could be. Earmarked into their retirement fund, to their voyeur account, and we're still working on that, it looks like it's a possibility. We have to look at the voyeur documents that we signed to see how that process and procedure works. It seems like there's a, there's a time within the, the year that we, that we can do it, or we can only do a certain amount of times per year, so. We want to make sure that we look at that and provide that option as well, so. I'll report back once I have a chance to look at the voyeur documents, unfortunately, we can't find them right now. They may have been, they may have been misplaced in our transition over here, so it'll take us a little while to get a hold of them, but we'll find them.
That's a good thought.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, but, you know, they were concerned about the tax implications, so that avoids it if you can do that.
Yeah, right, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
In the meantime, I also, you know, just made a, a quick proposals that I, what I'd like to have you folks consider is. Is adding additional hundred hours of accrued vacation time that they could add to the books. And what I propose would be, we wouldn't increase the monetary value, it would stay at two hundred upon separation. But it would provide them some flexibility to put that, those hundred hours on the books in the event that. Right now, what they're doing is they're taking a day or two days here or there. This way they could just allow it to accumulate and then take it as a vacation. This way, they could just allow it to accumulate and then take it as a vacation either prior to separation or take a longer vacation as a result of having the extra time. So that was what I thought would be, and I'm only making the proposal to those employees that have been here twenty-plus years. So we're talking a very small amount of employees that would meet that requirement. I mean, it would give them some flexibility, but not any more compensation upon separation.
Do they have any questions about that?
If they accumulate an extra hundred hours, how long could it take for that to happen? And what happens if they do get there? Now they have three-hundred hours of vacation. We have a lot.
Well, I think it, it's, I think at some point, um, we're going to have a little more employees at the Public Works Department. So these, these supervisory positions will be able to take some needed time. And that some of this will sort of slow down in terms of, of the amount of accumulated time that they have. Uh, and Phil, if we get to that point, I think we, we may just need to make a, a hard decision and say, we've gone as far as we're going to go and either you take your vacation or you don't. Right. And that would be the, you know, the catch-all that, to what we do at that point.
That hundred, that extra hundred hours, do they use or lose?
They would, uh, right now, they would, they would accumulate, it'd be part of their maximum. Uh, but if they separated from the town, they would not be able to, to get paid for it. Uh, they'd only get paid up to two-hundred, yep.
Well, I think we have the two folks that we're talking about that are in that category. I think without them two right now, Public Works would be in the dump. Well, I think I'd be in favor of giving them the extra hundred hours to accumulate under the, the way you just said.
Yeah, what I, what I propose is stuff, i- if you, if you agree with it in principle, then I would put it together in a draft that would include, that it would be part of the personnel policy. And then I would show that to you and then you could take action on that when you see it. So my plan would be to, if, I wanted to throw it out there to see what kind of, if it resonated with the board. And if it does, then I'll put it within a draft to, so you can review it and you can look at the rest of it and how we include it in.
I have a question. Good. Sorry if I'm acting, no, but I don't have the luxury of working for somebody that offers vacation time. So if you accumulate, look, three-hundred hours.
Right.
And let's say they were getting done at the end of the year, like they knew that they were going to retire or move on at the end of the year. Could somebody, is, do we have a policy in place to say that they couldn't take a hundred hours of vacation time to get them to the end of the year and then cash out on the two-hundred hours that they have banked? How does that work?
No, you, you're absolutely correct. That, that typically is what happens. What typically will happen is if you, if you only allow them to, upon separation, to take two-hundred hours and they accumulate three-hundred hours, you'll see somebody who will say, I'm going to retire at the end of this month. And then they'll take that, take that time as vacation. And then once they've done the vacation, then they'll retire. Yeah, so there, a lot of times they'll, they'll, they'll receive it one way or the other.
And that doesn't hurt us in any way?
Well, we've never, I, we've never experienced it here, but I have experienced that in other municipalities. And it, as long as you have full staffing, it didn't seem to, to be that part of, big of a problem. Because they were leaving, you were making adjustments, you were hiring people. You were additional, maybe some of your junior staff were going to become senior staff and they were going to be taking over responsibility. So it was a, a little bit of a transition, but...
So would you please, folks, you want to keep the draft, the policy change, or the personal policy change, so they can look at it next meeting or?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion for that or?
I don't think so.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll put it together.
Little different subject along those that, those individuals, is there a concern that those two are going to retire at the same time?
No.
Okay.
I already have that insurance.
Well, that would hurt.
Yeah.
Would you get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, we can't, we can't prevent it from happening, but I don't believe that both are going to be leaving at the same time.
I mean, Terry's my age, so I would imagine...
Right, I, I think Terry would be around for a few more years and then, but I know that, that Roger is really looking forward to retirement. And he wants to, wants to move on with his life, so...
I suspect that Terry would like to replace Roger when he does retire.
I'm sure.
I'd be a hundred percent in favor of that.
Yep.
Moving on to a role in COVID-19.
Yeah, um, yeah, what I, what I attempted to do with, with this information, and I asked Jen to come in tonight because she's been intimately involved in some of our discussions relative to her program, its association with the school and how COVID-19 may be affecting her. But more importantly, the reason I put it on there is that the, the school board was having discussions and part of the discussions that came up was what are the, what are the communities doing to assist in, in either getting vaccinations or getting testing and those kinds of things? And, and my initial, you know, my, my thought about that whole thing is, is that there are places, and I put it in your packet. There are other places, the CDC has locations for folks to get vaccinations. I mean, Sanford right now, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe, and then starting Saturday this past week, you can go up there and get a vaccination of any one of the three doses that you would prefer to get. Um, and then the, the testing, both the PCR and the other testing are available in various locations throughout York County and then right in our area in Bitterford and Kennybunk. So I'm not quite sure what the question was leading to in terms of what other services that we need to provide. But, um, you know, in my view, as I always tell people, I, I like to try to stay in our lane. And our lane isn't providing health services to folks through municipal government. It is, I think it's providing a conduit to where they can get those services. I'm more than willing to do that, but I don't think that folks should be looking to the municipality to put financial money in front of something which I think is readily available to them elsewhere. So that's my two, two cents on it. But the other part that we're dealing with, and that, that's why I wanted Jen to, to come here tonight, is just to give you an overview of what she's up against in terms of rec, um, some of the, um, some of the challenges that we're presently having with providing a, um, providing a recreation of before or after-school program based on the pool testing that they're now having and how rec's role may be involved in that. I think us, and she can elaborate more, us in Arundel is a little bit unique situation where I believe that we are intimately part of the school operation on a day-to-day basis because our offices are located in the school. Where the other two municipalities within the school district have offices elsewhere. So, um, and those students that are in those schools, that attend those programs, go, they walk, they perhaps walk down the aisle, walk down the hallway and they come to our program. So it's not like they leave and then come back. So I just wanted her to fill you in as to what she's experiencing right now and what we're trying to deal with.
Before Jen started, one of the comments I did, Mark, the share that was made was, does a town, do the towns have nurse, you know, that, that they could use, you know, like the school has a, has a nurse? And they were asking if the towns have, you know, employed a nurse, you know? And I didn't want to answer, I know we don't, and I, and I agree, we want to stay in our lane and that's not something that we want to get into with that. That was one of the questions that was asked, that was discussed.
I think I can speak to why that question was asked, if I may.
Yep.
Um, so I don't know if you're all familiar with, with what the concept of pool testing is. Have you guys been educated on all of that thing at this point? So basically, if, if you, say you all have a child in the school, if you give permission for that child to be in the weekly pool testing, then if somebody, say we're all in a pool together, we all swab our noses and put them into one container. That container gets sent off. It's either clean or it's not. If it's not, if there is COVID within that pool, then that pool is tested again. Each person is tested separately this time to determine which person has it. So say it's me that has COVID, then the rest of you are now close contacts. But if you are involved in the pool testing through the school and, and taking part in that testing, then you can stay in school as a close contact. You cannot, however, participate in community programs. So if you're playing soccer, if you're playing flag football, if you are in gymnastics, you cannot participate in those things while you are a close contact. So for your ten days, you have to stay home, the only place you can go is school. So, um, some, it happened in the district with another rec department where pool testing began and a child tested positive. That child had attended the before and after-school program operated by the rec department. And because that child was attending the rec program, which has been deemed a community program, um, none of the children that were present could go to school during that ten-day period while they were close contacts. So I began trying to get ahead of that, um, knowing that that's going to happen in our school too. We were closed at the time, but I knew that when we got back and, and full testing began, it's going to happen for us too. And so I have been in discussions with the school administration about being viewed as a, so pool testing, close contacts, being able to attend school can cover school and school affiliated programs. And I believe that the Arundel Parks and Rec Department is a school affiliated program. We are within the building, our staff has an office there, we are participating in the pool testing through the school. Um, the children attend the school, they literally do walk down the hall. They get dropped off at the school at seven in the morning perhaps to us. They stay there for the day and do school. The end of the day, they come back to us, they never leave the building. Um, it's the same people, it's the same kids, they're all already involved in the pool testing. So to your point, Dan, the question about whether the town has nurses is because if a child is identified, close contacts, if a child who has attended the rec program is positive for COVID, then you do have to do contact tracing. You do have to let the other children know who are, who may have been in contact with the one who's positive. You have to let them know that they are now close contacts. Um, so that they know that they're not supposed to participate in, um, you know, outside activities and they're supposed to, you know, follow the protocols to be tested to make sure that they don't come down with it after so many days. And the reason the school is asking that is because they don't want that to fall on their school nurses. They don't want their school nurses to be responsible for that. So I can tell you that, um, we operated an eight-week summer rec program this year. I had a staff of COVID tests like this on my desk, they were all negative. But there were, there were colds going around summer rec this year. After summer rec ended, we did a week of trips. We, we couldn't be in the school because they needed to get it ready for this school year to begin. So we operated out of this building, we did a week of trips. And on Saturday morning, at the end of that week, we operated our trips Monday through Thursday. And on Saturday morning, I got a call that a child had tested positive who was in attendance on Thursday. So I immediately contacted the CDC and asked what I needed to do, excuse me. And I know that anyone who is in, in close contact with that child forty-eight hours prior to his, his symptoms, that the onset of his symptoms, the symptoms began set up Thursday. Mom noticed that he was coughing, he's an asthmatic, he coughs on and off anyway. Mom noticed that it was a little bit worse than usual, she took him out to dinner, he had a milkshake, it was worse after the milkshake. Next morning, he woke up with a sore throat, so she took him for a test and Saturday morning they got the positive result. So I did call the CDC, asked what the protocol was. I got in touch with the school principal and asked him, I said, I want to be in line with what the school would do if this school year had begun because this is, now we're talking about two weeks before, you know, at that point, it was ten days before school was supposed to start. And I didn't want this to spread and cause schools to not be able to open. So I said, what, what would the school be doing if this was happening? I want to follow that same protocol. So he told me, um, you know, basically just that child has to quarantine. All the close contacts need to be, you know, they need to be told, they need to be told that they need to be tested. And they need to stay home for ten days. And he also suggested that I get in touch with Dr. Burgess, who is the school doctor. So I did that as well and followed, you know, all the, all the, whatever they wanted me to do, I did. So that Saturday morning, we were dropping off one of our daughters to college. So I spent the time on the way there on phone contacting each family who had been in contact with that child, letting them know what that meant for them and that they needed to stay home, they needed to be tested. Even if the test is negative, they still have to quarantine for their ten days, talk them through all that. And I think that is what the school is looking to avoid their school nurses having to do that. I will do that for us, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't, the thought would never cross my mind for the school nurse to have to do that. And I think that's a matter of just keeping the lines of communication open. I have a, a really good relationship with the, with the school staff because I work in building, you know, like can talk with the, the school and make sure that I'm following the same protocols that they are because I, I have to, I'm there, you know? Um, so we're working through that, we don't have an answer yet. And I just would hate for, and I think what happened with the other rec department was the families who were using the program were kind of lambasted by it because if their children had not attended the before and after-school program, then they would have been able to attend school as close contacts. But because they attended that program and there was an exposure in that program and that was deemed a community program, then those children couldn't go anywhere for ten days, not even to school. And I feel like it's the same kids, it's the same school, it's the same staff. We're all vaccinated, we're all involved in the, in the pool testing. And I think it would be really unfortunate for parents to have to stay home from work for ten days, to stay home with their kids just because they were in my program, which again is in the same building, same kid, you know? Uh, so that's kind of what, what we're working on at this point.
You're trying to work the pool testing along with the school pool testing, right? Kind of marry that together?
It's the same kid that are already being pool tested. And we have joined the pool testing as a rec staff, those of us that don't work for the school. I've got, you know, Tyler and Lori and I, and then I've got, um, where I've got some teachers at the school who work for me. And then I have one who's a, who's doesn't, uh, work at the school and she just comes in part-time. We're all vaccinated, all of us, including her, are involved in the pool testing so that we would know if one of us had it, you know, where we've joined the school in that regard as well.
One of the things that we're trying to get approval of is to be vacated of the community, um, the community designation. Because with that designation provides, tells, tells the kids if they come to the before or after care, then if they test, um, they have to leave. And, and so, yeah, and then they have to be out. So we're, we're trying to at least, at least provide to them the information that we have and say, this doesn't make any sense. Allow these kids to stay, continue to stay in school. We're providing this service for the families, before and after care, and it's the same kids. So that issue still is pending. We've provided all the information, all the responses that they've asked us, uh, to provide to them. So, and we have a, um, a Zoom meeting on Wednesday morning. on Wednesday morning. So hopefully I'll have an answer as to how the school's going to handle that for us now. It may be unique. Uh, it may be different for the, for the Kenny Bunk and Kenny Bunk Port Rec Departments. Because they're not in the school as much as we are, because our office is there. So not sure how the school is going to react to that, but I don't want us to be put in one box, takes care of everything, because this is unique. It's different. So.
Is that a, is that a decision for the RSU administrator or is it something that's going to have to go through the board of directors?
I think it's an administrative decision. That's my impression.
Yeah. And, you know, and I think that your explanation kind of explains the school nurse and I can see how that can come into play.
Absolutely.
You know,
They don't want more of their school nurses. They're already stretched to their limit.
Right. And, and I think it's, it's, if we can avoid that and stay clear and make sure that we have, you know, protocols in place that it doesn't get the school nurse involved if it's something that's happened in your rec, I think, I think that's a big plus, you know, maybe would put some of those issues to bed, you know, concerns.
And I, I mean, I feel like it's my obligation to let the parents know that there's a chance that even though they've enrolled their child in the pool test and they may not be able to attend school if they're in our program. Uh, because I feel like, you know, the other situation, those parents had no idea that by sending their child to the before and after school program, that if somebody tested positive, they wouldn't be able to go to school the 10 day, for 10 days. And I think some of those parents feel that they may not have used the before and after school program if they knew that that was going to happen. Cause that's not the only time it's going to happen. We, you know, we're, what are we, three weeks into school? So I would like to, I would like to be identified as a school affiliated program.
Right.
As opposed to a community program, because if we are viewed as school affiliated and we're following school protocol, which I believe we do and, and would be willing to do it, you know, what we need to do to keep, I think the goal is kids in school.
And your argument really for that is because everything is, is located right there in the school. Right? You're located, the after, the, the program is located there.
Who makes the call, Jen? CDC?
Um, the CDC released updated, um, guidance last week on, on this very issue and they, they did add the word, instead of just school programs, they added school and school affiliated program. So now it's up to the district. You know, what they do, school affiliated program. And I think that, you know, honestly, I think RSC 21 probably has a part in the right place. They don't want to take on any more responsibility than they need to. So the questions I had were, do I keep attendance records? Do I, um, keep a record of, like, is there seating?
Seating, right.
Is there, do we encourage, do we keep children playing with kids in their own grade level? Are we capable of, of doing our own contact tracing? Those are the questions that Dr. Cooper sent to us, which I, which we answered and sent right back today.
So, you have an idea of what, you know, uh, community wise and then specifically for our department, what we're up against. So hopefully it ends up being a, a positive thing for us and we can, especially for our kids.
And for the families.
And the families, yeah.
Get some degrees normally for themselves and their children and for them to be able to go to work. And I would hate for them to not be able to go to work simply because they participated in the before and after school program that's in their child's school with all the same people, you know? And, and there's no more, in my mind, there's no more exposure for these kids. You know, yes, we have a wide variety of children there. But some of these kids, if they don't attend our program every, any, every single day are on a school bus. They're being exposed on the school bus to other children, not just their, their own classmate or their own grade level. Um, so I'm, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to achieve that school affiliated designation, but if not, then you may be hearing from some pretty unhappy parents.
Does, does your program afford the affiliate to mingle more with, with, you know, kids from different classes? They must, right?
Sure. I mean, I, I can't say no to that, but I will say that, you know, one of the questions was, do we require universal masking? That was another question that Dr. Cooper brought in the building. Absolutely. Everybody wears a mask inside. Outdoors, we are following school protocol, which is that they don't need to wear a mask if they're outside. Um, so we don't make them wear a mask when they're outside. They're, they're on the playground, they're running, you know, past each other, you know, using similar equipment and that sort of thing, but apparently being outdoors is safer than being indoors. And I guess one of my arguments would be that they're in a bus with all grade levels and they're in, they're inside something. When they're exposed to kids, you know, at different grade levels. In my program, they're outdoors. Um, we honestly have not had to be indoors yet because of the weather. It's been, been good for us, but, um, we will keep them separated by grade level when they're inside. They won't be able to run past each other, you know, like they can on the playground.
Is your staff all vaccinated?
We're all vaccinated. We're all doing the pool test from the school.
Day after, all you can do.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, the next, the next thing I had was, um, uh, at your last meeting, you had DJ, uh, had show, had, had shown up talking specifically about impact fees with you folks. And one of the specific questions you asked was, um, what, uh, what impact fees were being at, being requested from around us. So he put together a, uh, a quick little, uh, one-page report, provided that information to you. So I've made that available to you and it looks like there isn't that many that are doing impact fees. I think because of the complexity of it. Um, but there are a few and I, it, it looks like, uh, Kittery and North Burwick are the only two right now that he was able to discover that are doing something. So I, yeah, I'm not sure if that begs the question of where you want to go with impact fees or or what you want to do at this point, uh, to look at them further or address it further. Not sure.
Jason was the one who raved that he was trying to get some insurance against, um, you know, roads being town roads that we need to build, but help maintain them and repair and all that sort of stuff. But we can't do that.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought it up because we've been talking about this for a while. So I think it's nice that we got into a deeper discussion on this.
It sounded like it was structured like, like a TIF, really, because you have to designate the,
Yep.
the area or the, or the function of the town. The funds can only go towards that. So I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think we need, I mean, I think we, because Arundel obviously is going to do nothing but grow. Um, you know, whether that means we implement sidewalks in certain areas, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, but I, I don't think it's a bad idea because I think it will help us offset something at some point. But I was disappointed in the fact to know that we couldn't spend the money on like plowing equipment or, or labor, so to speak, you know, like I was hoping to, to get that.
Well, I mean, there is the possibility of, although we apparently we've got manpower problems, but the fire station may need to.
Right, yeah.
Now, that you could do.
Yeah, right.
How long would it take us to, if we do impact fees? Obviously we got to be reasonable. How long would it take us to raise enough money to do anything significant?
I mean, it sounds to me like it would be the scope of the project for one, because that would, that would basically dictate how much money you're actually going to make on, you know, I think in hindsight, we missed the boat on the cottages because that would have been the perfect scenario to put impact fees in and, you know, we could have got like a fire truck out of it or something.
Well, we do have the TIF.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah. And, and the TIF is, you know, we can use it. There's a, things that are identified in the TIF. What we've been focusing on right now is the, is the sewer extension.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, there's funds there for a variety of things.
It was disappointing to hear that you had a timeline of, what'd he say, like three years or three to five years to, it was a 10 year, but there was a 10 year thing and then.
I can't remember. I got it still. Yeah, there is.
You have to keep separate accounting. You have to make sure who's provided the money to you. And in, in the event you don't use it, you got to make sure it gets returned to them.
Right.
Uh, so it's a pretty elaborate, uh, process. So.
And, you know, like the Hissong development, I mean, it's kind of late, obviously late now, but that's a, that's a huge development. And, and I think, I don't know if we've got any more coming. I know there's, there's some possible developments coming off of Brimstone Road or.
Well, I, I'm not quite sure, but the, the Hissong development, they voluntarily provided money to the town. We didn't call it impact fee. It was asked and they said, yes, we'd do that.
But we wanted them to, to make a field for ball players and they said, no, we don't want to do that, but we'll give you money.
Okay. And that's what's happened here. And we've got some money in a, in a recreation park account right now that's.
It's not a whole lot.
It's eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Oh, that's good.
And it's not linked to any pinback fee and we don't have to return it.
Yeah.
But the first point, I mean, I, I don't know how to do that, how you would fix the number. Do you do it based upon the projections of how many building permits are going to be issued over the next five years? I mean, I, I don't know how they come to, I mean, you saw among even the Burick and, uh,
Yeah.
and Kittery, the numbers are, you know, why would it be different?
Because somebody's doing five hundred dollars a bedroom.
Right, yeah. That's a lot of money.
That, that's a lot of money and that could stop somebody from building.
Right.
And so I might wonder if Rich could tell us if there's any subdivisions in the pipeline.
Rich, microphone please. Sorry.
I want to head away emails.
She won't email you. There is, uh, something going on at the cottages where they're putting in 100 plus units. They're coming to see us. Uh, this come, the next meeting on October 5th, I believe is the date.
An additional?
An additional. And part of that.
We wouldn't be able to, to do anything to catch that at this point now anyways, right?
Uh, well, perhaps, probably could.
Part, part of that.
I'm sorry, I missed, who was that?
The cottages, seasonal cottages. They're putting in a completely new section that was never in the original plan. Part of that is outside the TIF. They'll probably ask you to come in and modify the TIF. I would if I were them. Uh, but it's, it's a hundred, I don't know if it's a hundred or a hundred and forty units that they're, they're planning on putting in there. We have another one that's going to have, I don't know how many exactly, but there's a couple of other developments that are going in. But the seasonal cottage, because there's a TIF and we can modify the TIF, I think we're kind of would almost kind of getting the same thing as we move an impact fee, right? I mean, so I don't, I don't see why.
You know, that's dedicated to specific items. I mean, the impact fee here would just be collected against a project of some sort that would cover the entire town. Right now we're kind of dedicated to sewer and there was something else.
Yeah, there was, uh, hiring a economic development director.
Yeah, but you can, you can change that TIF as long as it has some sort of connection to the, to the seasonal cottage. We don't have to spend that money on the sewer extensions.
That is correct.
Right? You can, as long as you can tie it to.
In the TIF document, there are several other, um, options that you could use the money on.
Right.
They do a hundred plus units. And if they're one bedroom or two.
But they're nine hundred square feet total. That's already restricted by the original agreement.
So they can be moved.
So there's probably going to be one, and there may be one bedroom on the first floor with a little, uh,
loft or something.
A little loft, you know, up above.
Five hundred times one hundred.
Five thousand, five thousand.
Five thousand?
No, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Oh, five hundred. Yeah, yeah, five hundred. Yep, fifty thousand, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's half an ambulance.
Almost half.
For a company that big, fifty thousand might not shut it down, but a small developer, five hundred a bedroom.
But they're, they're just going to pass that cost on to, to the buyer anyway.
Yeah.
It's like taxes. You pass them on to the next guy.
Other than that, is there much of anything else?
There's, there's a couple, a couple of more, uh, Sean Doustin is looking at one down off, uh, Log Cabin Road, almost to the port.
Wasn't there one off the either Irving or Brimstone Road out that way?
There's one, uh, there's a Rundle's Keep that has seven uh, up on, off Irving Road. Irving Road itself is, uh, the Dubois are coming in with another one that has three lots going in. There's small little ones going on all over the place, but in terms of anything big, I think the, other than the cottages, uh, Sean Doustin's down on Log Cabin Road. And I believe he's looking at around twenty.
I did a, just a little caveat to that. I did a little analysis today. The postal service asked for us to provide them some information relative to, they have an increase in, uh, mail coming to Arundel. So I provided them the new, um, population number, which was, I think, forty-four, twenty-five now. Um, and then, uh, they wanted the last five years of, of actual building permits for housing units. Now, not only we have single-family housing, we had, um, apartment, you know, accessory apartments, duplexes, and then the cottages. And over the last five years, that averages about sixty-seven units a year. So that gives you a caveat of where we are in terms of that, even though we're limited on those building permits for those other ones, but the cottages is really added, uh, to that whole total.
We, we, I believe we exempted the cottages out from the permits.
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
And I, I forgot to mention, there is a new age restricted mobile home park. Going in from the other, across from the other one. It's going to have twenty-five units in it.
Oh, it sounds like free money to me. You might only get a little here and there, but.
Well, but we have to designate specifically where we want it to go. And then we have to calculate how much we're going to add, how much we're going to charge each one of them if we do it townwide. You could do it district-wide or specific to a certain location, but I, I don't think that would be to our advantage. So.
The other thing too was like you said, the fifty-five, that's already been approved, right? Not, not yet, no. No, but everything else besides Sean hasn't been approved yet. Doustin? Sean has not been approved. The only one out of that list that I gave you is a Rundle's Keep and they have been approved. None of the other ones have been approved yet. They're all in the pipeline and they're starting to come in. We've got to rather slow some. I mean, I, I have a hard burn with, you know, if, if somebody is working right now, trying to put in a development and they, you know, already approached the planning board and this and they're not approved yet, but now all of a sudden they get rid of approving. Here we go. We slap, uh, you know.
If you guys think it's going to happen in a couple of weeks, you're sadly mistaken.
That, that, that's right.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah.
This is, if you want us to proceed with that, it's going to take some.
I'm saying that based on what Jason was saying. It's free money, but we're not going to get that money. It's going to be a while before we do that.
Correct.
And there's going to be a lot of bookkeeping going, uh, go along with that money.
There's a reason I'm not working.
And, you know, a hundred percent sold on impact fees. But, so later, fire departments will have to grow and we're going to have to put additions on. And I think somewhere down the road, we're going to have to pony up and do a full-time fire department with full-time employees, twenty-four seven. It's coming. We may not like it, but it's coming.
I mean, we're almost at five thousand people now and it's, it's going to go more. So I, I agree, you know, and, uh, and the same thing with Roger and his crew. I mean, that's just putting more, more and more work on, on the road crew and, you know.
Public works, public road.
Yep.
Public works is easy. Just, just say no more new, no more new roads.
We already say that.
We, we've been told by a couple of developers that they plan on coming and asking.
Oh, we have a policy right now. We're not accepting. They, they got to go through the. Oh, we have a policy right now. We're not accepting. They, they got to go through the petition process.
Right.
Can we use any of that TIF money from the central main power line to add to the fire stations to the building?
Yes, if, yeah, if it has some uh to add to the building.
Yes.
Yeah, because if we need.
You can add addition to the building. You could have bought fire engine, which we are doing right now. Um, and there's uh firefighting equipment, forest firefighting equipment that we can purchase, which we've done. So this, we've used it for a variety of things already, based within the uh documents.
Yeah, that's where the new rush truck came from, isn't it?
What about staffing? Um, I don't believe staffing is in there. I have to double check that, that TIF again to see if it's there. Is that something else that could get altered? Not quite sure.
Uh, it, it can get altered, but I don't know if staffing would be allowed in the
Right.
in, in the TIF guidelines. Right? Any of, any TIFs you can al-, you can come back and then alter, but it's just going to follow the got to follow the guidelines. And I don't believe staffing is going to do it, yeah.
And you got to get the other side to cooperate.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a two way street.
Yeah. Yeah, but from a, like a CMP perspective or even uh you know, the cottages, they're paying their money, so I'm not sure why they would oppose however they're going to use it, but.
Who knows?
Yeah.
CMP wants a big boat coming up, so.
Are we all set with impact fees now?
Where do you want to go with this?
Yeah, where do you want me to go with it?
I think we probably ought to give it some more thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need some more discussion. Try to figure out.
I think our next thing is to try to probably establish a process and a procedure to follow. And then we can sort of fill in what, what you think we need to earmark that funding for. Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Hey, Keith, getting back to the COVID thing, you provided us with a with a flow chart. You're planning on talking about this tonight?
Um, just very briefly, that, that was based on, uh, if you remember, uh, uh, at your last meeting, um, Jason provided that flow, a copy of a flow chart. So we've sort of not plagiarized it, but used it because most of the information that was on that flow chart was also on the is really CDC guidelines. So this provides, and my, my thought is, I wanted to give it to you because I'm going to provide it to staff probably tomorrow. And so they have, they have this readily available sheet that they can look at to see what the process should be. If, if one of them comes down with symptoms or uh something, something happens to them, so. Uh, I thought it was a good document. Yeah, will work well for our staff, I think.
The only thing that I would add is, I think we should explain what the symptoms are. If you have, you know, a cough or, you know, fever, whatever, all of these things, just so that it's in black and white and nobody comes back and says, well, geez, I didn't really know. So I think that should be explained, be specific on what those symptoms are.
The uh, the CDC guidelines and I can, we can attach a copy to those whole things, have the symptom
Yep.
page in there that provide all that information.
Yeah, that should be, that should be part of this. Okay.
Yep. Then the, the next thing I have is the um we're finally, been finally able to get the um the final projections on demo costs for the uh building at four sixty eight Limick Road. I can assure you that at this point, this is on the high side. I've added about twenty percent to ensure that if we do move forward with this, either through a special meeting process or a annual town meeting process, that we have the money available. So when we go to bid, we'll go to proposal for each one of these specific parts of it, we'll have enough money to cover the cost. So what you're seeing here is the asbestos removal, uh, cans and trucking of the cans to get rid of the disposal material. Uh, and excavator and operator, that was at uh, that was for three days, ten hours a day to cover that that cost. Uh, that was probably on the high side, we thought, but that was more appropriate. So we came in with a total of forty thousand dollars that um would, it would take to um to bring the building down and to move the debris away and to make the uh, uh, the area full of grass again, as opposed to what it is right now. So I, I'm not quite sure where you want to go with it at this point. Uh, I obviously laid out there that this would be something, if you want us to continue to move forward with this, to uh take it to the budget board. So we'd have to have a discussion with them as to what we're planning on doing. Um, and then you folks would have to make an ultimate decision of, as to when you would like to move this forward to a to some sort of town meeting approval, uh, either a special town meeting or an annual town meeting. So that's where we are. The only thing I, that isn't in there would be, um, I got to get the power disconnected from the building, which shouldn't be an exorbitant amount of money. And then I have a oil tank that has two hundred and seventy five gallons in it, and we've already come together with a plan of what we're going to do um in terms of removal of that. Uh, our thoughts are that we have the capability of moving it in a hundred gallon lots. And um, as the, as the winter goes on, there are times that um the general assistance is providing fuel assistance to folks. So my thought is, we'll take that hundred, hundred gallon lots and move it to whoever um, uh, windy indicates to us that needs some fuel. And so we don't have to go out and buy it again at this point, and we'll have it, we can move it. So and then once it's uh, once it's uh, uh, totally removed, then we'll get the tank out of there and get the tank disposed of, so. Other than that, everything else will, you know, we'll have to decide what we want to do. The window, windows are fairly new. We may want to do an RFP and see who might like to remove the windows once the heat's, and everything's out. Most of the furniture has either been designated someplace else at this point. There's a few desks that have got some good quality to them, but other than that, everything else has been moved around, so. And there's a few, still a few historical items in there that I think we need to maybe move out and bring over here, then we can put them upstairs and decide what we want to do. Uh, upstairs and if you go in, you had some old aerial photographs that were taken and they're in a uh, a box and they're on, uh, it looks like they've been stapled or attached to a wooden so you pick it up and it gives you an aerial photo uh, of the area. I think that's something we probably want to keep. Uh, wouldn't want to destroy it, obviously, because it's some history as to what it may have looked like many, many years ago. So those kinds of things are still there, so we need to get through that, but those are the numbers. I don't know if it shocks anybody.
If I may.
Yeah.
Those numbers are not not legit. You get, you get ten cans. And I know for a fact it's a thousand dollars a can to do it. Uh, six thousand to take it down and load it into the cans is okay. What do they do? In fact, that's quite low. What do they do about the concrete foundation? And fill in the hole after it's all done, roaming it over and seeding it? Where's that money? I don't see it. They're not doing all of that for sixteen thousand, for six thousand dollars. Because that ten thousand is going to go to the disposal company.
So, so you, you're of the opinion I'm too low?
That is way too low.
Okay.
Six thousand excavator, yeah, right?
Yeah, two days, two days for the excavator is okay.
I got three days at two hundred bucks an hour for ten, ten hours a day. Excavator and, and operator. That's the, that's the estimate that we received.
That three days for the excavator might be all right. But then you're going to need a hundred or more yards of material to fill the hole.
Okay.
You're going to need some equipment to, you got to get rid of that concrete. Can't leave that in the ground. When you want to expand someday and go there, it's going to be a nightmare. So in my opinion, that's too long.
Okay.
I just demoed the house this week. It was a two story house, not very big. We used uh seven cans. And it took it that day and a half. But then it took another day to prep the area for, for a new foundation.
Okay, well, I'll go back and put some more numbers together and come back to you and see. And I appreciate your comments, Phil. I mean, obviously you're in the business and know a little bit more about this, so. Um, I appreciate you uh pointing out the areas that we think we need to add some more money to.
And if they want to do foundation and fill the hole and all that, for that money, that's great.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, gotcha.
What do we have? Um, how much money is in the municipal fund balance?
Six hundred and something, oh, you mean in the fund balance itself?
Yeah.
The last audited financial is two point three, I think. That was after the three hundred thousand removed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you got
I remember that.
You've got fu-, you've got money in there to cover this on the fund balance if in fact you decide to to do it. That would be, I think, what we were talking about before was to was to do it that way as opposed to adding tax dollars to do it. But let me get some more numbers for you. We'll bring it back.
What was it? A we, is a board, a real Kate, I mean, we had all of these public meetings. We get information from the public, really not a whole lot, not a whole lot that we can do, but um we don't really need to get any more public meetings, right? We'll probably have to do a public hearing. Or actually, no, we won't have to. We'll have the special meetings.
The special meeting is, yeah, it does have time. Yep, people are objecting, they'll come forward at that.
People can weigh in at that point and then they can vote accordingly.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, is that a, is that a, that's a budget number? Is that from a, a demolition company or is that something that we came up with in-house?
What, what budget number?
The, the forty thousand for the demolition.
That, that's all, that's all, um, one of them came from Safe Environmental Solutions on the asbestos removal. The other estimate came from Casella Waste Systems, looking at the square footage of the building and how many cans it would take and how much they were going to charge us to get rid of the tonnage, as well as the um trucking of that. And then the other estimate came from Mark Welch in terms of excavator and operator. Okay, Will, Will, uh, you, you, you got some great points here. I don't think I even took into consideration on the on the loam and that kind of stuff. So obviously we'll add that in and I'll have Casella double check their uh, their numbers in terms of cans. Um, trying to think, let me see if I have that with me, uh, Phil. I have finished your estimate on the old town hall. There's plenty of room to use. One hundred yard live four trailers to remove the building. This will save the town money. Total tonnage, seventy six tons. Estimated loads, four. That's what they're telling me.
Four trailers?
Yep, hundred yard trailers.
Yeah.
But you're still telling me I, I, obviously I didn't put anything in there for, for uh materials to go in the ground in loam and seed, so I need to add those numbers in there too. Okay.
Okay, so I guess we'll come back to that, huh?
Yep. I think at some point, when you bring it back, we're going to have to establish if you want to have it as a special annual. Um, and then we can move from there accordingly.
Business section, the agenda, approval of the general assistance ordinance.
Some of second.
All right, I have a sheet here that needs to be signed. I'll sign it on down.
Let me see.
I have it on.
Oh, you got it, Dan. Okay.
The next item is are we looking to approve or appoint this committee at this point, Sam?
Um, yes, we, we went, uh, what, since August through September, um, and I've, folks have contacted me to provide service uh to you folks on the char-, on the charter review committee. I provided to you those names of those folks that have contacted me. Um, and I'm not sure what you want to do with it, how you would like to proceed at this point.
I said, take them all.
I don't see why not. I mean, we started out with the building committee with twenty five or something like that, but we ended up with eight.
Eight, nine, yeah.
So, you know, the people are going to drift off.
Okay.
No question.
So, and that's what I thought you folks would say, so that, and that's fine. I think that's great. Um, it'll just be um scheduling and when we want to begin. So um, what I want to do is sort of back, back into that. My thought is that we'll probably want to have this charter amendments on the annual town meeting warrant. That would be my thought. That would be, you know, in, in June. So um, we may be able to get started a little later in the process. Perhaps after the, you know, maybe in February, then we can start. Um, unless you guys want to go sooner. And that way we can uh get involved in it and figure out what we're going to do at that point.
I would in looking at the names that are on here, I would suggest that we start sooner.
What are you saying, Ben? Well, I think that's the issue.
We're going to get a good charter. I'm just, you know.
I, I think that's the issue that we try to, we need to stay narrowly focused upon. How far do we want to go with this? And is it our intent to just make the amendment changes that we've recognized within the document? Or is it the, the board's opinion that we should be looking at the entire document again for changes? So I think that's a direction that we'll need to have you folks provide. So we, when we meet with the committee, we can say, this is what we're intending to do.
Well, if you're going to revise the charter, it's a different process than amending the charter.
Correct.
It's a much more complicated process to revise it. Yeah, they have, they have elect these people, I think. But I'm trying to think back on the statute, but I think that's what it said. So we're amending, I mean, I don't think we're going to rewrite.
No, my, my intent, you know, my intent was, when I looked at it, there were some things that were clearly we're not doing or are different, that's changed, so that's just a.
But I think we need to stay in the amendment because we can do that.
Correct.
But not, we can't do a revision. That's, that's a whole different procedure, so. But not, we can't do a revision. That's a whole different procedure. So.
So this group will be charged with with just amending the charter.
Correct. So what stops this group from somebody, you know, we can come up and say, we think this isn't right, this environment. And then this group gets together and what stops somebody from saying, well, that's not right either, and that's not right either. And then we end up doing the whole frigging thing. How do we, how do we control?
Have to go back to square one and they have to be elected.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have that.
Okay, I don't think so either.
I think, I don't know, man.
I think, you know, we have to, I mean, we're going to be there, right? So.
Right. I mean, I think if we're if we're strong on, look, this is what we want to look at. I think we should all look at the charter and identify the areas and then go in and say, well, this is all we're focusing on. Because I know that there's going to be, guarantee you.
Well, the other thing is, I don't know, if you start in February, we start budget then, too. It's going to run into some meetings and conflicts and scheduling, I think. So maybe we should get started sooner rather than later.
Exactly. That was part of my thought, and I think some of this will get drawn out.
I just know that when we get close to holding a public hearing, we have to give post-it for seven days and then 30 days after the hearing, we have to have that meeting.
Right.
So that's where we're time sensitive. That's as far as I see in the statute.
But we could, if we had everything and we got everything, let's just say, we got everything done by Christmas. I'm just picking these.
Yep.
Right? We've got it, you know, we're good. So then we push out our meetings so that it coincides with town meeting. We don't have to have, we don't have to move that stuff right away as long as we're figuring that we're done and.
Well, right now I have a, what I've done is I've taken the charter and created a working copy. And I've identified in red the areas that I think need to be amended.
Okay.
I will, I will I will email that to you folks right now. So you can take a look at it and I'll put it in our in our packets for next meeting so you can discuss it further to see if there's other things you would like to add as amendments to the charter. Then I think after that, we may then have that organizational meeting with the charter review committee. Tell them what we're looking at in terms of amendments. And then we can sit down and have those discussions.
Richard, do you have something?
And typical, nothing can says that, nothing says I'm right or wrong. But I'm not sure that a charter committee can only deal with what the Board of Select would recommend. I think it opens up the entire charter for review. That's, that's what I think. And I'm not sure if that's accurate. I would have to defer to you or some other esteemed attorney that would know the answer to that question. I just think it opens everything up.
Well, as we said, we're going to have to try to define and let the group know that we are confined to an amended procedure.
Right, it says here in the statute, charter amendments procedure. The municipal office may determine that amendments to the municipal charter should be considered and by order provide notice and hearing on them in the same manner as provided in section five. And there's a section here. So there's clearly a piece in the statute that provides amendments only, and that's what we're trying to focus on.
Okay.
But you know, that's where we are because we don't want to go through a revision.
Okay. Well, no, that was, that was just my point because I don't know the answer to that question. But I've always thought that if you're going to look at something like that, every organization I've ever belonged to, when we look at the constitution and bylaws of the charter or whatever, it's always been, the entire thing is open. We may not change everything, but it's always been available. So that was my
Well, there may be members of this committee who have ideas on other amendments that should be had, but we can certainly take that up. I don't suggest it. We can find just to amend this board, I see, as appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that was just my, because I don't know. We can move through the whole charter.
I've never claimed to be the smartest person in the, you know, I have.
But I was can't add in.
We just can't, but we just can't take the documents completely destructured.
Okay.
Okay, that's, we're going to stay within the confines of what we have right now.
Yeah.
But as you said, if there's something that we don't need anymore, that's eliminated, if that's what the besides the or maybe somebody else suggested that I don't amend what exists to make it function better or make it more attractive to people to join in. I don't know.
I think I got it.
Okay, so you're going to let folks know, Keith?
Yes.
They're on board or we're on board?
Yeah, and then I'll say, stay tuned. We'll set it, establish a meeting and then we'll call you all to the meeting.
Okay, so you want to report on some budget adjustments for 2021?
Right. I've provided a memo to you on the overdrafts that that we've done on our unaudited end of year for the past fiscal year. Again, in in the annual town meeting from from the previous fiscal year, you were provided the ability to move 5% of the total dollars appropriated in certain articles. So when I looked at those articles, they totaled 2,652,800. So 5% would be they, under your authority, you'd have the ability to move 132,642.20. We've had two areas of accounts that were overdrafted. The town hall administrative account was overdrafted by 36,602. And the transfer station account was overdrafted by 9,761, which gives us a total of within those two budgets that we were over. And then I tried to explain the areas within the town hall administration account in terms of staffing and building maintenance that that predicated us going over. And then I also included within there the transfer station account and why that was over because of the increased testing of the landfill. So my my thoughts are, my recommendation would be to move 30,000 from the general government account to the town hall account. The general government account has 34,153 dollars remaining in it from last fiscal year. So I'm thinking to take 30,000 and then take that 8,000 from the police services account, which had 17,323 dollars left to make up the overdraft in the town hall administrative account. And then in the transfer station account, we would take $10,000 from the public works budget, which had 55,772 dollars remaining in it to cover the overdraft in the transfer station account, which specifically was for the landfill monitoring in water. So that would be my proposal to you based on the memo that I provided to you.
What's your folks? The motion, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve moving those funds to cover the overdrafted.
I'll second.
Any further discussions or questions? Is it? Any others? All in favor?
Right, the clerk has provided a request for a modification in the business audit for voter registration for the for the upcoming, for the November 2nd election. She realizes that she's a little early, but times are going to get hard for her. So she would like to make that proposal now and make the change accordingly.
So I move. I think we've done this every
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll send that down for signatures. The next is the election warden. Again, she would like to have approval of Sylvia Perrow as the warden for the election on November 2nd.
I make a motion, we elect Sylvia Perrow.
I'll second.
All in favor?
The the next thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is we have a renewal permit for automobile graveyard and recycling business at AIM Recycling on Route 1. The property, they've provided to the town a completed recyclers permit application. The fee of $50 has been paid and the CEO has reviewed and approved the application as submitted. So I would make a recommendation or seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve name, recycle.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Right here?
Yep. And lastly, and we neglected, and Velma pointed this out last, at your last meeting. You already approved Radrick Trust's permit for, and we forgot to fill the, sign the permit. So I'm just going to send it down so you folks can sign it.
You want to approve just a payable warrant or get a payable?
Just payable for this pay.
Just payable. So move.
All in favor?
Thank you for this. I'll give it to the historical society.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other business? Dan, go to it.
Yeah.
Um, I got a question about, it was asked about the Brimstone Road, Lemic Road intersection. I know the last time we, I thought we were waiting for Verizon. Is that still the case?
Um, I haven't been down yet, so I don't know if Verizon has moved there. I think that CMP has moved theirs.
All right.
So it's Verizon that we're waiting for, I believe.
And then once Verizon moves it, we're planning to move forward with that, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's, I believe that's an in-house modification.
Right, right. I thought the only thing we were waiting for was the Verizon, but I wasn't sure.
Yep.
So can you find out on that? Because I was asked and I told him I'd give him back the information.
Anybody else? Ten motion to adjourn.
Tomo?